Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kachinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Gleason.
Here.
Commissioner Way.
Here.
Mayor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of agenda, Mr. Wilkins.
Yes, sir, can we just add one item to the agenda? City beautification, and you can make that 5F over at discretion.
City beautification. All right, is there any other additions or subtractions or changes? Commissioner Kachinsky.
I'd like to add an item, New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve party.
Okay, we'll make that 5G.
Okay.
All right, any other ones? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Motion by Commissioner Wilkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carries 520. All right, discussion items, grant match update. Madam Clerk, I believe you need to get us started, or Mr. Frango, somebody.
I'm just gonna say hello and greetings, my friend is community development director. We've been working with Grant Match for a few months now, and wanted to give them an opportunity to give you a status update on some of our products. So, with us here both, and I can see the both on the screen, Michelle and Corey, can you guys hear us okay? All right, very good to hear, let them go, take it away.
Fantastic. Post this disabled, this is some screen sharing. So, I think we've got so long, and just coming to you, and I apologize to everyone here, since you're speaking to the notes that are in the identification. It's intended for the, I don't find it to last, like, some public, if anybody else has anything. So, just be great first.
Really, so, thank you for having us here tonight, it's my pleasure and I appreciate your time. So, we've had an agreement for, as Mike said, a few months now, and really, the value that we bring, we've got agreement, part of the agreement, to be specifically there to identify high probability grant opportunities, and state relations, more projects, and mission and leadership. And we know what the city of Crehmore, Crehmore, too, identified the lack of high probability opportunities, and then you staple control of the, once the execute on, in which we would use the full proposal about this. The agreement is such that all of our deliverables are distributed second before the T-Day, so there's no risk or upfront cost to you. It is 10% up to a million dollars, as the approved amount, and by 3% over a million. And we also, uh, want to provide the first president, who finds, which is a lot like Earth, with the reporting, and provide some place for such that grams. Um, so far, it's where you said, it's the direct segue to where you said, at the top of the day, we've gone over to notably identify a high value opportunity, but to apply to that. So, we're gonna just, here today, to, as long as we're able to die to be great, and how we can make our partnership the best it can be to maximize every dollar that government spending on Crehmore.
Yeah, right, thanks Michelle. So, as Michelle says, we've put up previous grant applications to the state of business, to the community of Abdali, and rest of Kansas, both previously declined applications. Due to the nature of our working relationships, potential CP arranger, we're pursuing the right funding opportunities, not necessarily every time the opportunity, important decisions to make. Um, our goal is truly understanding, understand the people, resources they're responsible for, and then use that information to recommend high probability funds based on that. Uh, we have constantly available information, uh, as proposals, demographics, socioeconomic data, and also what we have full front, anecdotal evidence, like, fireflyers, I've seen, and that all seeks to enhance our recognition, so that we're presenting the right funding opportunities to you. Um, the data we collect, and information that we share with the folks that we're working with within the city, tells us that, you know, what works in St. Bother Valley, they received $125,000 in rural transformation grant funding in 2022, we would not be asking with that application in a community like Crehmore. Um, so, compared to Bother, Crehmore's economic vitality score is 45.6, we rank 243rd out of Southern 14th in North Carolina. Um, for Bother, you have, Bother has a, a certain lower median household income, population state designated census tract, is more associated with the status, and their status score is 70, ranking them 442nd in North Carolina. Um, so, all this is saying that the types of funding opportunities that they, other or other, uh, community members offer, won't necessarily be the same ones to recommend to Crehmore. Um, as Michelle said, it's a small step, a much larger walk, as you're saying, that was, I'm here to work with you, and I still understand of, uh, what we're working with, the team that you've got here, the proposal, the role of task, you're carrying a project, and I hope you do understand the industry's terms of, for, you know, 10, 10,000 level projects, it's significant for, than 16,100 level approval. Um, so, more likely to identify a compliance and smaller projects through the single application. Um, that's going to allow us to, um, maintain our activity, hopefully, those one type of industries, uh, certain comparison meetings. Um, pairing up with the Grant Match platform, that we use, which the city of Crehmore does have access to, compromise for the modules to be streamlined, so that no deadlines are missed, only have supply phases, so one is not available, and we ensure that our team members receive high level of completion deadlines. As Michelle mentioned, it's the first number of supplies included within our service fee, but I still involve on a day-to-day basis with members of the team that I work with in Crehmore, so that we can assist with additional supplies, uh, needs, just kind of sort of favors. So, with that, we'll move into the play progress and, uh, the evaluation study. Um, so, in working with Mr. Frango's, we have, in fact, we've explained one application that the city of Crehmore to grant from, on the study, since that's the improvement that's necessary to rehabilitate play progress camp. Um, the project's off just under $253,000 in funding for playing engineering studies, the project's off just over $375,000. But ultimately, fine, um, we found in the review of that application, that the application sells short on key decision criteria that the team that uses to determine progress needs. Uh, so, sadly, there is a violence, acquisition data, seeking to be needed if you need, and hopefully, causes presence in action. How many people, that look at houses, would be affected by damage, all of this data, to compare across the place, there is this, that, and the actions. Um, and in the smart recommendation, Crehmore, to use the funds in year annual places, to complete the necessary studies and plans, and level fees up, that that fund came along to become a zone. Um, with the investment of, I think, $50,000 to complete one of the nation's studies, and to complete a emergency access plan that the, that the state already requires you to complete, um, these activities will allow us to be in a much stronger position to reapply for team of funding this fall, by being able to address the gaps that 37 states did. Um, if we reference these studies in the plan, and we're specific in a description of what needs to be fixed, why, and what happens if you don't fix it, um, then we can have team that come back with, with specific one of those reference materials, so that they can get the full picture of what your actions, basically, as a, as a community. Um, so, this kind of raises into how our strategic budget approach works. Um, like I said, we run here, they're day-based, over 10,000 funding programs, we share that through, through funding experience, and, 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 25 of us, I think, on the other team, that we come forth inter, interconnectedly, and that has actually already established that opportunity will be provided for Crehmore to, uh, to hopefully proceed to grant $300,000 for support, planning, and, 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 associated with community active participation network. Um, so, planning for active participation, trail and recreation, were a part of the projects in the, which was, and we've already managed to identify that opportunity and like that, we should be able to make a decision on that, and clear this call. Um, that means that Crehmore does not have the largest number of communities that this year is compared to the region, we're not going to discuss that, satisfied, just supporting initiatives, you're a small city, you, there's, there's a few key services the population is increasingly more close, increasingly well off. Um, so, with that, I can rely when I say that the majority of federal funding opportunities are going to be limited to projects where we have a very, very secure tip, um, so, no sticking around tanks for old essentials. Um, yeah, in order for us to address that, in order for us to address that, we can work with communities, that may be self-employed, um, and start to promote processes, or weekly beneficial opportunities that will be on the shoulders. Instead of doing a singular park and recreation strategy that is just Crehmore specific, if we were to combine that and the central 5G needs adjacent communities, funding agencies can look at that, and indicate that there's a wider socioeconomic impact per dollar spent on the project. Um, by the way, the more that we can be specific with the open governance of the programs that we're, for, like, the grants, that, um, so, what that means is, sometimes we're gonna have to be, like, the case, the project that you already said, like, I needed, and current into something that not just follows the, all, substantially follow the, uh, merit set of criteria. Um, so, finding the right opportunity, to pass about, that has to be an activity is, what can we do to combine, add, track support for objectives, to set up those test of criteria, and improve your policy success? Um, and then finally, just be cautious of, like, we have a very good understanding of when certain things occur within a calendar year to find the head case. Uh, so, if Crehmore can make effort to have the right project information ready, or funding applications you do, we're gonna be in a much better position to be able to, to make that, be ready to go. Um, so, park and recreation, tough ones, applications, totally typically do, we can do name, land water grants, shoreline office, trail grants, are January true made, and various , and then the scale of brands, the standard, rehabilitation, is going to, usually in November this year, and it's going to be the same type of reverse. Um, so, last thing, I, ready to go projects, use the time in between those in cases, to develop and hold, and, and, identify what reporting information we need, we put that information on our shelf, and then, when that opportunity opens, one of the funding that's serious enough, we can use that time to gather letters of support, to make sure that our culture assessments are upstate, and ensure that all the assessment criteria in the application, uh, guidelines, should they have changed at all, are being focused to, uh, so that we have already, so, put that in there to work from. So, we're here, just as a, you know, as a final closing class, often, often, nature existing grant process, I want to, I want to be understanding that, there is another grant consultant that works in county, who works Crehmore on a part-time basis, that's probably okay, we just need to make sure that we're not duplicating the efforts that person is, is doing, um, so that we're not, not getting ourselves in the, and no time to, to, there are two applications to reply to, to stay, uh, uh, infrastructure. Meaning to do as much like this as possible is my goal, that's my job. Um, we do that by accessing, that's publicly available data, but we do need to have local partners, like, 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 for, like, for our community, to support that information gathering process, because we're not, you know, on the ground, going to be Crehmore. Um, having local relationships, offering local relationships is what I expect, and it's fair enough to say that we're only have that, that partnership. Um, finally, if there are any questions from council, from anybody in the city, Mike and Michael, tell us on my confirmation, if there isn't any answer that can be right away, we'll definitely find that information for you, and make sure that it's sent to the great audience. Um, so, we're here to support through the entire process. Um, so, I'm looking forward to any questions, thank her, thank her, have a good day, and looking forward to many years to come.
Mr. Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Way.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem.
I do have questions. Thank you so much for your presentation, and, uh, the work that you've done so far for us. I'm glad you are aware of the, the county person that we have that's working on grants, too, but this is not one of them that we have. I don't believe we've given this one to them, is that right, Mike?
We didn't give them, we didn't give the county any required listing of projects, they're just on, on funding for coast governments.
Okay, you, you said something about cleanup costs, would cleanup costs be, um, considered for part of the grant? Would that be an item that we could apply for and use the grant money for?
So, cleanup costs can be used in certain funding opportunities, as I said, if this last year happened, um, typically, that is what we make on, whether a national state or, or the state of overs, we have been, set within the theory, but we can typically work in around, you know, number of theories that have state from legacy, uh, and kind of like, taking back off. That's kind of where opportunities for those partnership type of situations come up, you know, maybe kind of work with other communities that, that are your situation as well.
Okay, so, um, the, um, application time is from November to February, is that what you said?
Yeah, November, February, for the brick, uh, for the brick.
For the brick, right.
Uh, for the, for the, for the branch, uh, that's, uh, we'll, 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 we'll have that next, next week, too, first.
Um, who does the flood mitigate, who does the EAP and flood mitigation study?
Uh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, that's all. It's okay, that's all right. Do we know somebody who can do that for us?
No, we would have to go out for an RFP probably, an RFP depending. It's, uh, it's something that's outlined in the budget, and we had talked about it around the other time, but it's a process study, it's, it's estimated to go in $30,000.
And when we supply, and we did the brick grant, grant, the last time, we didn't have one of them done?
Correct.
Okay. So if they're saying that this might help us get it through, and it's in the budget, we might as well go for it. Um, go ahead.
We have to, sure.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, it says complete necessary EAP, would the EAP do it for us?
So the EAP needs the innovation study, one of the two, which are all precursors to the brick applications.
Okay.
So you're supposed to have all these known ones that then, for you to show, so here to the brick applications show our, right?
Right.
Right now, we don't really have anything for that.
Okay.
Tried to put together the best application we could, but approved in that.
If I remember the last time we were up against a deadline?
Yeah.
I think we were.
The brick is a challenging grant because it's two stages, I don't know if we're going to go into it, but we have to compete first at the state level, and then at the national level in order to get funding.
Okay.
It's really hard, the state does its first cut of every application, only the ones that rise to the state level then proceed on to FEMA at the national level. So it's a real challenge, it, it, it's not even, but, but right now, we're working with our hands tied behind our back, and we don't have all the information we need.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of the core saying, you can't apply with an improvement to our application without.
Would Rep Telus do that for us?
Rep Telus could, if, if they had the right people. In the past, we've used Techtrucks.
Okay.
Techtrucks is the group that helped us, um, with the first brick application, and there's another firm, gosh, I can't remember, a competing firm, that once they learned we worked with Techtrucks, they were like, oh, yeah, we can do that too, why don't you come and, or work with us, you know, they come after the fact.
Yeah.
And I'm like, well, it's too late, you know?
I have a lot of faith in Rep Telus, that's the.
What, what we need is, is really an RFP probably in order to find the best firms qualified to do that work, and then go down the line.
Okay.
So we can get it done, and then see what results.
Okay. All right. That's all I got.
Mr. Blaisen.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate y'all taking the time to share with us. If you have anything else, we're happy to listen to it. Uh, if not, again, thank you for being part of our meeting.
Absolutely, thank you for having us. I'm now, like, uh, like, like, of our, uh, information, uh, so the other question to come up, give us a, uh, message.
Sure will, thank you very much.
Okay, for your partnership, we look forward to success together.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All right, goodbye.
All right, we move to five B, um, CPRC reappointments, city clerk.
Uh, yes, sir. So Priscilla, Chavis Lockley, Caitlin King, and Christie Williams are expiring their seats on the CPRC as of August 31st, 2024. We're looking for a motion to reappoint them. They've all, um, they've reached out to them, and they all want to be reappointed.
Take a motion and report. All right, we have a motion on the floor to reappoint. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Uh, four to zero. Make sure that's corrected on our earlier thing that I made a comment on. Okay, let's see. All right, resolution two for the closure of Main Street for the Crete More Music Festival. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, the commissioners, uh, the 31st Annual Crete More Music Festival is scheduled for Saturday, September the 21st, 2024. This annual event requires temporary use and closure of Main Street between Line and Park Avenue, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. In previous years, NC DOT has requested a special events request form to close Main Street on this date. This year, DOT is simplifying the process and are requesting the city pass a resolution stating the dates and time of the event of closure, release NC of DOT from energies, injuries, or damages of the street regarding the closing, and city of Crete will be responsible for traffic control. Uh, you have a copy of the resolution attached.
Any discussion on this item? Not hearing any. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion is made by Mayor Protem to approve Resolution 2024-R-09. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries four to zero.
Why does the resolution say 2021?
Uh, that will be changed.
Okay. I heard you say 24, and I'm reading it to 21.
Well, my requesting motions are.
You were right.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Move down to five D, monthly financial report. Mr. Fames.
Mr. Davis, I'm here. Uh, first, uh, to this, uh, that, um, not much to report in, uh, you know, update costs and, uh, of course, we were receiving July out of some, uh, collection in this month, here in the next week or so, and we reported, and same as sales, we expect that they run two months behind, we will receive, uh, July sales, uh, package, uh, in October. Um, same point as always, you, I'm going to tell the services to break down the recreational revenues, uh, listed there, um, it can come down to the, you know, funding expenditures. Uh, just one thing, the note, okay, on that, the matter truck payment in the first hand was a fire, first, uh, take, and I think the note is to the five bucks.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So that was a pay to go directly to the.
Nine, ten, twelve.
Yeah, they were, uh, they were, uh, in, uh, half, just, uh, a agreement with the five bucks for the third, uh, to give up, that's why. Uh, we come down to the phone order, uh, you see there, uh, I think it's somewhere exposed, yes, that is the, uh, thing that's, that's the mix around the county board, city on topic for, uh, uh, the phone order, I'm sorry. All right, that early, the phone orders, we will see July, the phone order, second year in the next week or so. And we come down to Powell bill, um, over there, that's the, that's the, and Powell bill is definitely, and, um, we have received, we first allocation of Powell bill fund, uh, that will come here next, uh, once, I will support and report to you all my team receipts. Other than that, um, just one thing, I'll take this, um, our project that's going to be our first, I have to hand you, who they know, just their documentation, and make sure that I, to begin that process of, just want to keep you all available, that process is, you see, we're seeing one thing they're not, so they're first, that's the, yeah.
Any questions? Uh, Mayor Protem.
We get that balance that the DOT owes us, does that go into the Powell bill fund?
Twenty-five, uh.
Nineteen thousand?
Eighteen.
From the fifth, R5707L?
Yeah.
We get.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. I didn't know if it went there for under general fund.
Any questions? Stand at your end.
Yes, sir.
As always, Lee, excellent job, we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
All right, we move now to five E, liaison appointment to the Crete More Veterans Organization. As you see in your, uh, notes here, uh, Mayor Protem Kachinsky has expressed interest in serving as the board liaison to the Crete More Veterans Organization. I think this is a very admirable request and very well thought out, um, so tonight we need a motion to approve Mayor Protem to the Crete More Veterans Organization. Soon, motion is made by Commissioner Wilkins. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries four to nothing. All right, we move down now to five F, city board beautification, Commissioner Wilkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I know, that's the board that consider having code enforcement, of course, the city manager, get a little sharper on some of the things within the city. The grass along NC 56 from Mount Energy to Lake Rogers has not been cut this summer that I am aware of, and I believe the DOT schedule is twice during the summer, I don't believe they've come at all. If I'm wrong, please correct me. I wouldn't say you're wrong, but we've, we've notified them twice that they need to cut the grass from Mount Energy to Highway 15. So I guess I'm asking, whatever tent can we put into it, because we're about to leave this summer, and they haven't been here. So, we need to be more forceful in some manner or form. I used to contact, uh, Quarry personally, when I served as a board previously. I don't know if Quarry's still there, or who's there, but, you know, just emailing, nothing's getting done. The maintenance guy locally is, uh, Jason Lee from Bramble County. I don't know who Steve is talking with, but we'll ramp it up. Yes, sir. Additionally, along 56 is private property that they're not cutting the grass, and I know we have a 12-inch ordinance, I believe. I'm not going around with a ruler, but a lot of it looks like it's more than 12 inches than me, so I'm wondering why they haven't been, uh, violated, for lack of a better word.
Like, it is possible that they have been notified, just don't know that we would hear about it with, with individuals.
Um, I, I would not, I mean, Jerry's all over the top of this. When he gets a call from me that's passed along, he's out there expecting to give him warnings verbal, and then comes back with written warning. So I guess my question, how come it's not being cut? If we're doing everything we're supposed to do? It's unsightly. Mike, you got anything you want to add with that?
Franco's?
His timeframe.
Jerry has everything that he can to get out there now. I think the truth is, 12 inches is 12 inches, and, and I don't know that a lot of those along the edge, that sits down towards the lake, it's really 12 inches in height. Um, it looks, it looks unchuck, it looks unruly, but it's not to the level of violation. That's, that's the best explanation I can give you. And then the other explanation is it does take time, we need to take warnings, we send letters, but we have to give people a certain period of time to respond, and then we learn just how difficult it is to actually force compliance, and that's just a challenge that we, our, uh, we don't have the authority to go on and speak along and cut it for, we cannot do that without court order, and that involves your territory.
I don't disagree with you, but this board has shown that we're ready to enforce anything that's unsightly, so if you give us that, we'll enforce it, I won't speak for the board, but we've shown in the past.
Yes, sir.
So we need.
We do, we do have a process.
I understand, I understand.
And, yeah, uh, from Lake Rogers out to city limits, I notice that every day I go through, that's crazy. Um, but like you say, it could be eleven and a half inches, or, you know, or it could be laying down and be two feet tall, just laying down, but I know they're doing well, a good job of monitoring it.
We really need the DOT to do their job better, because we've received several complaints along.
And Mr. Sidney, I gotta tell you again, when I was on the board, Quarry, he came twice for the summer. He'll tell you when he was coming on or about July, and when on or about in August, and they were about following the schedule.
All right, I've got the city manager's going, see if there's a Quarry in there that we can reach out.
He may have retired, I don't know. And once they're pregnant, she's cutting this.
Yeah.
I know it's about contractors, they don't pay them more than chess.
Mayor Protem. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she had a question about which.
Oh, but, uh.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that a dog would remain again, it's got a new owner, house sold, transferred, that is unsightly, and I've been complaining about that property for over a year, so, um, they've got a new owner in there, people have all moved in, and, yeah, that one's really bad.
I apologize for that. No concern, please continue.
Question, the white building opposite the Citco gas station on the corner of NC 56 and Morse Hayes Road, is that now in city, in the state limits? Still county? Uh, is there a county commissioner here anywhere? Oh, there is.
Russ. Russ.
Commissioner May?
Um, Commissioner Wilkins has a question, if you would mind.
Yes, sir.
I know you're in.
They did it.
Yep, sorry about that.
I was engaged on the email.
No problem. The white building opposite the Citco, on the corner of NC 56 and Morse Hayes Road, that building is beyond dis, uh, dis, it's in disrepair. Is there anything the county can do to, uh, have it make a decision, either repair it?
I can have Mr. Baker look at it. I, I know that we, before, there was a bunch of, uh, junk comments, and they were providing notice, and it did something up.
You're right.
Um, I'll check to see what, I'll have him check to see what county ordinance may be a circle to just keep of it. I will tell you, based on my experiences, is that, um, unless it's a public safety or public health matters, it's likely something that, um, is survived, unless it's hosting roads, uh, DCs, the state of the act, but, uh, causes that's based on limited research in our court, but I will make a new court.
I appreciate it, thanks, sir. Last thing is.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I'm aware that subdivisions have co, co, covenants, which normally govern their homes within that subdivision, but I witnessed a failure to properly enforce those covenants in selected subdivisions in the city, and I believe we now have 10 subdivisions, Franco's? That's a list, you, it's a li, maybe a list of 10. Yes, yeah.
I just don't cover this all around responsibility.
Okay, I'm, and I'm not asking it for, yeah, I'm just making that statement.
Sure.
However, I am asking, a code enforcement, we visit those subdivisions, and if he sees something that needs to be enforced, make sure that they get the applicable fines.
Oh, he, uh, Jerry, Jerry out there.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree he's out there, but I disagree if he's looking and enforcing.
Okay.
So I need him to look closely, you know, all 10 of these subdivisions, and that would be Graham's Cross, which is coming, Sotheby's, Whitehall, Amberleaf, Golden Pond, Paddington, Williamsburg Park, Hunter's Ridge, Davenport, and Holly Creek's not here yet, so eight.
Okay.
Um, and again, my reason for all these requests is sure that we don't have any further deterioration of all homes in our city. I surely understand we're not Carrie, we're not Apex, we're not even Holly Springs, we surely could be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, one thing, I guess, we, person to reach out for all these developments would be, uh, whoever's managing it, that right, Mr. Franco's?
And, and if I can give you a little pushback on that, in through the cases that has been done, and those HOA boards failed to act, so the management companies kind of had their hands tied, so maybe I'll listen to the city.
We can hear all the time about them foreclosing on houses that refuse to, to comply and pay bills and memberships and all that. I'm sure there's some issues the HOA could do, it, it should be written in the rules to do it. Just a question, somebody.
My understanding is they can't, and I could be wrong, there's not much they can do without the permission of the HOA board.
But that's what means HOA board should be involved.
But if they don't, I'm saying that doesn't change unsightliness, so let's do something.
Was Paddington letting your list meet us? Okay. Um, Mayor Protem.
So, the city requires all subdivisions to have an HOA. It's a requirement.
We do the subdivisions. Subdivisions that would begin to then are required to have an HOA actively, you know, some divisions that don't have an HOA.
Right.
Which makes it all more reasonable for us to be doing it, they don't have an HOA, excuse me.
It's okay. And I will tell you that, um, we don't, Whitehall doesn't have a management company, and if you. company. And if you go down Elm Street to go the back way into Whitehall, you can't even read the sign because the bushes are grown over it. And I know that there was an issue, Sotheby's doesn't have an HOA. And I talked about the fact that you couldn't injure. I don't know who Jerry's spoke to, but it got cut back. So my thought is that if the city requires developers to start an HOA, does the city look at the covenants before the HOA is established? Well, what if the covenants violate city code?
I don't know what it would. The only thing we do is we make sure that they have an HOA with companies that govern them. We don't try to dabble in what the covenants say. We do like, we get control for footage of comments.
Right.
And the lot size and certain things that the covenants do address and we don't. So we just make sure that they have.
Because there's an awful lot of HOAs that are failing and homeowners are at within trying, like, like Commissioner Wilkins is saying, they're at within trying to figure out, what do I do? And if they have a management company, the management company says, I got these three homes that are in violation. They've been in violation for six months. Let's foreclose on them. And the board says, no, 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 let it go. There's got to be some way the city of Creedmore can say, we can't, you can't have your property looking like this.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking.
If it's been violated, the city code serves.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about a, excuse me again. I'm talking about a bicycle laying on the grass. I'm talking about violations.
Sure.
The fascia's coming off the house.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
Is Jerry full time?
No.
Twenty four hours.
Twenty four hours.
We got too many subdivisions for them.
Um, Whitehall used to have an HOA.
It does have an HOA. But the board doesn't believe that we should be pushing people to do something.
They do not have a management company.
No.
Just an HOA. Does the HOA meet there?
I don't know because they don't tell us. I sent emails. I sent emails and I've been told that I'm harassing the president.
I just think it's funny that you live there and they won't behave when they need.
They have one annual meeting a year. That's it.
No, it's Greg and I.
Commissioner Wilkins, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir.
We will move on to five G, New Year's Eve party for the city. Mayor Protem, I believe that's you.
It is me. Stop smiling. So I met with some city officials about Mr. Agdapa's request for the New Year's Eve party on Main Street. And after some discussion, we decided that it would be best to wait until December of two thousand twenty five to do it so that we could market it. Hopefully, more businesses on Main Street could prepare for it. And so we are going to shoot for New Year's Eve of two thousand twenty five. And hopefully people will come. And I want to apologize to everybody for the farmer's market idea. I didn't think it was going to fail. And I feel like I, I feel like a failure because it didn't work out.
I wouldn't. I think if we, I would think that if, if we had started it earlier in the spring, when they're getting their stuff together and doing all that, we may have had a better shot. But to try to bring it out right in the middle is a little late because most of the farmers probably already figured places they were going to go. As far as, as far as New Year's Eve goes, do you come up with some ideas on exactly how you want to carry that off? Because I'm going to be really interested to see.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have a good time. And the other thing is, the music festival, I need, I need volunteers. The music festival is going to have a dunking booth. And I need seven volunteers to sit in the dunking booth for an hour at least and entertain the troops.
I volunteer, Commissioner Albright.
I'll volunteer for an hour as long as they don't use that green water out of the fire truck.
Did you say a dunking booth or?
A dunking booth, not a donkey booth.
That, that's.
That's, that's tonight in Chicago. That's not here.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the Mayor Protem? All right. That concludes our agenda. Commissioner Way, have you got anything you'd like to bring before the board before we adjourn?
Uh, no, sir. The only thing I can add is that the letter from the commissioners on behalf of the city of Creedmore, Simon myself and Commissioner Wilkins was delivered to Suwasa and read in place in the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
And it was a detailed explanation of what processes are being taken. Ask Suwasa given by the executive director that can be found in the minutes online.
Thank you. Commissioner Blaisen.
Um, I attended that Suwasa meeting and wish the fact that I just missed the signing ceremony, but I was, would have signed it if I had. But I will say, for the first time in years, in years, the attention that that brought and other things was probably when I went, executive director Stoyer was done with his presentation and the meeting was over, I went up to him and said, tada. He said, is that a good tada or a bad tada? I said, it's a good tada. It was the first time that he really took the time and did a really good, solid presentation on what they were doing, which I had brought up at a previous meeting that said that they got to get out front. And, and I thought, you did a good job that night. I knew.
Mayor Protem.
I don't know.
Commissioner Wil.
Nothing, sir.
City manager, have you got anything else you'd like to bring before us?
Yes, sir, I know.
All right. Once again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for a well-attended meeting and for your input into the business of the city of Creedmore. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. We are adjourned.
Mike, you're going to get home, you watch, doesn't it, your father?
Yeah.
My man.
Hey, talk about football, man. That's right. And right behind that pocket. It's always something.